As call to order, the pledge will be led by Board Member Andy Witt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Andy. Welcome everyone. So good to see everyone on this March 20th, March 22nd meeting. It's hard to believe it's March 22nd. Roll call, Mrs. Vaughn.
Chairman, we're missing Amy Dotson this evening.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sid, so move.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman, that's all in favor.
Very good. Thank you so much. Special items. Clyde Smith served on the Tullahoma City Schools Board from 1988 until 2008. His time included being Chairman of the Board as well as President of the Tennessee School Board Association. He passed in November of 2010, and this award was established in 2012 under the direction of Dr. Wayland Long and Board Member Vicki Shelton. In September of 2021, the Board unanimously selected Marion and Stephen Coleman to be the 21st and 22nd recipients of the Clyde W. Smith Junior Leadership Award. Tonight, we are very happy to have the opportunity to celebrate them. And we are going to hear from some people that know all about them. Justin Scott, Dr. Greg English, and Atticus Hensley.
This is the good version.
In the history of Tennessee band directors, our state has been blessed with many individuals who have distinguished themselves as teachers, mentors, organizers, and leaders. Rarely, however, has there been a couple, a true and unique partnership so devoted to the course of music education that the two are seen as one. Herein, we have the careers, or rather, the career of Stephen and Marion Coleman, a unique husband and wife team whose legacy is so intertwined that anyone who knows them cannot say one name without saying the other name in the same breath. The Coleman's began their teaching career together at Wortburg Central High, taking charge of both the instrumental and vocal departments. During their three-year stay at Wortburg, they took the Wortburg Central High School Band to the very first Class A marching championship, which is now known as Division One. In 1979, Stephen and Marion left Wortburg and began the next chapter of their partnership at Stephen's hometown school, Waverly Central High School. During the next nine years, Stephen and Marion built the Waverly High School Band Program to such a high degree of musicianship that the band was invited to perform at the TMEA Conference in 1985 and the MENC Southern Division Conference in 1986. On a personal note, not too long after that, the two of them recognized in me some things that I failed to see in myself, and encouraged me to enter the classroom, and basically salvaged my life from a big wrecking pile. Thank you very much.
By this time, 12 years into their career, Stephen and Marion had firmly developed the central guiding tenet of their teaching philosophy that has been so influential to all of us who have been so fortunate to have taught with and been influenced by them. That tenet is, it's all about the kids. No award, no trophy, citation, accolade, or even concert is sought after until it is proven beyond a doubt that the musical, academic, and social well-being of their band members is first assured. That guiding principle is impressed upon all who have entered their band rooms, whether they have been private teachers, staff members, or student teachers. With this philosophy firmly in place, Stephen and Marion began the next chapter of their partnership in 1988, when they took the direction of the Tullahoma Band Program. For the next 20 years, they built the band program in Tullahoma to such a high degree of musicianship that the name "Tullahoma Bands" and "quality" became synonymous. Under the Coleman's direction, the Tullahoma Bands were invited to perform at the Tennessee Music Educators Association Conference twice, first in 1989 and again in 2005, and received the Tennessee Bandmaster Sweepstakes Award five times. At the request of the U.S. Department of the Interior, the band performed in a ceremony in Hawaii commemorating the 50th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. Additionally, the Coleman-led Tullahoma Band received an invitation from the Mexican government to present a concert in Mexico honoring the 25th anniversary of the founding of Cancun. Their bands have performed in the Fiesta Bowl, the Rose Bowl, and the Chicago St. Patrick's Day Parades, as well as with the West Point Band. Several of these performances saw the premiere of multiple commission works, including "Wave Rider for Band" by Greg Danner and "Quico for Band and Percussion" featuring the Caixa Trio, also by Greg Danner. On my personal note, I walked into the East Middle Band Room in 1998, much to their surprise to student teach with them. No one told them I was coming. Thank God, they didn't send me packing. I owe them a great debt, and no one deserves this more than they do. Following the retirement from the Tullahoma City School System in 2011, Stephen was offered a position as Director of Bands at Cumberland University. Marion, however, wasn't quite ready to relinquish her baton just yet and wanted to continue teaching the students of Tullahoma. She decided to return halftime to work with the Beginning Band Program. She continued in this role for three years until she fully retired in the spring of 2013. In addition to all of their achievements as band directors, a profound sense of responsibility prompted them to serve in various capacities in professional and community organizations. A short list of these accomplishments include both of them serving as President of MTSBOA and Phi Beta Mu, Stephen serving as President of TMEA, our state music organization, and the Tennessee Bandmasters Association, and Marion serving as Chair of the Tullahoma Arts Council and Supervisor of Student Teachers from Belmont University. In addition, both Stephen and Marion were inducted in the TMEA Hall of Fame in 2009, honored by the Tullahoma City School System as Teachers of the Year, and awarded the NBA Citation of Excellence, and were inducted into the Tennessee Bandmasters Hall of Fame in 2015. While all of these accomplishments are wonderful in and of themselves, the hallmark of their partnership comes back to their philosophy of "it's all about the kids." Students leave the Tullahoma Band Program knowing and believing that the most important aspect of their music experience with instrumental music education is that they matured as young adults with music as a catalyst for their growth. Stephen and Marion never lost faith in them as young musicians or as young adults. As colleagues, we frequently heard the phrase "Mom and Dad Coleman" or "Mom and Pop Coleman." For many of these students, these awards and accolades were nice, but that was truly, excuse me, but what was truly memorable and treasured was the second family, and in some instances, the only real family that was created by Mom and Dad Coleman, who saw it, that the musical and social and academic well-being of each and every one of their kids was nurtured and fulfilled. Stephen and Marion still reside here in Tullahoma, where Marion enjoys her retirement with her plethora of animals and huge dogs, and Stephen continues to dedicate his time by serving as President and CEO of Arts Ed Tennessee and President of the Tennessee Arts Academy Foundation. On my personal note, when I was in college, I went to my trumpet teacher and my former director at the time and said, "I've got to figure out somewhere to student teach. I don't know where to go." And he said, "I know exactly where you need to go. You need to go to Tullahoma with Stephen Marion Coleman." At that time, I hadn't, I was just a kid in college. I didn't know any different. And much similar to Greg's experience, he sent me down here and, wow, the rest is history. I owe everything to them. They truly are a second Mom and Pop to me. I am who I am because of them, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I love you guys, and nobody deserves this more than you. Appreciate it.
Doing the slides. I'm sorry, were we doing the slides? No, that wasn't related to this. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. And if the Coleman's, if you all want to say anything, don't feel like you have to.
Oh, but I'm sure you do. I've met you briefly, and I can tell you do. The microphone is right there.
Well, I want to turn down the volume.
I had a feeling.
I just want to tell.
There is a light in the microphone.
We're going to get that to you.
This has been such a wonderful job, and I have met such wonderful people in this town. I hope you guys know how important all these people are and how much they care about you and your children. I've never seen anywhere, we've traveled a lot, we know a lot of folks, we're old, you know, meet a lot of band directors everywhere, and this is a special place. It's always been a special place. And I knew that when we came here, and we actually got a call begging us to come back to Waverly, what would it take? And we said, "No, this is where we need to be now." And I've never regretted it, he's never regretted it. We're just walking still within the community. No, you're not going to see me very often because I have a small zoo at home that I run and several houses that I live with. That is my second passion, is handling the neighbors. But Justin, and Greg, and Atticus, and Doug, all these people that we've taught with, they're friends of the rock. It's not going to get any better. So when you see them, please say thank you. When you see this incredible board that we worked with forever, and I'll never forget, you know, the first time we had tour of U-1, and Pat said, "What do you need new gear for?" And so we thought, "Okay, why do we need that?" Do you remember, Pat?
Uh, well, yes.
She does.
Go ahead.
And so we brought this really nice-looking tuba guy in with his jacket on. It was that bright red jacket that we had back in the old days. And when he turned around, it was split all the way down the back. And I said, "What do you think?"
And that was one of the good ones.
Yeah, that was one of the good ones. But they have supported us throughout our history here. They're supporting these guys now, and we love it. It's just, it's a very special place, and I want to thank you guys for a lot. Thank you.
I may need to mark this. This is the only time I've ever gotten the last word. I'm real happy about that. To be able to do something that you truly love is what life is all about. To be able to do something that you truly love and you pay for it is heaven. That is the absolute best it can get. This has been a tremendous experience for both of us. It has been a life we have loved every minute of, most every minute, and it is one that now we truly enjoy. These incredibly talented people that are running the music and arts program here and do such a fantastic job. And I have to, I can breathe very fond of the quality of the school board, the things that I'm involved with now, have the knowledge a little bit more about other school systems, and what I'm learning is, this is an incredibly special place, and we need to keep it, we need to keep it as good as it is. And thank you so much.
Congratulations again. We have a few more celebrations, and then if you need to leave after that, you just, I'll dismiss you to leave. Okay, we're moving now. More celebrations, National Merit Finalists.
Yes, I'm very excited to celebrate our National Merit Finalists, but first, I do want to also say to Stephen and Marion, job well done. I was named to this role, and you're one of the first few names that I heard about right away. What a legacy. What a tremendous legacy. And your work lives on. So, well done. Pleasure to have met you, and I cannot wait to see the purple hair. Very good. So, National Merit Finalists, and I am going to ask Franklin and Jacob to come forward while I share this information. Many of you will recall that in September this year, we celebrated these two THS students as they were named National Merit Semi-Finalists. And for our board members who have certificates, you are welcome to join them as they come up and stand beside them. And I know our communications specialist will enjoy taking photographs, and let's go ahead and stand in the center. This evening, I am thrilled to share that these young men have now been named National Merit Finalists. This elite honor begins each year with around, listen to this number now, 1.5 million students making application. After review of the top PSAT scores, the field is narrowed to 50,000 of the top applicants. 1.5 million to 50,000. Wow. Then 16,000 are selected as semi-finalists. And finally, the pool gets narrowed one more time to the 15,000 mark where these National Merit Finalists are named. It is my great honor to welcome both Jacob Bennett, and Jacob, if you'll raise your hand, everybody wave, he's proud to be Jacob Bennett, and Franklin Zhang to the stage as we celebrate them, 2022 National Merit Finalists. Way to go. Let's hear it for these two young men. Great job. Great job. So proud of you. All right, now, I want to move on to swim team. And if our three swimmers are here, Ellie, Logan, and Olivia, if you would make your way to the stage, please. You've now seen it modeled, so come on forward. This year, we had three Tullahoma High School swim team members qualify for the state championships. Can I get a whoop-whoop?
Whoop-whoop.
Yes. So, in February, Ellie Uline, Logan Holt, and Olivia Murphy all headed for the Nashville Aquatic Club for this state championship. These swimming all-stars had already set several school records and personal bests before even showing up. These swimmers all, all set personal bests at the state level. I am so proud of their achievements and representation at the state level. Let us all acknowledge our three state swimmers. Ellie, Logan, Olivia. Another team that's here. That's a big group in the back, our wrestling teams. Come on down. Let's hear about these incredible athletes. Lots of celebration happening. Come forward. Tullahoma recently sent 20 wrestlers to the TSSAA State Championships, and come on forward on the stage. Six of these wrestlers came home as state medalists. And I'm going to wait till they get up here because I'm going to ask these wrestlers to acknowledge with a raised hand so everybody can see who they are. We'll have to crowd in. What a fantastic looking group of student athletes. Can we squeeze in? Keep coming. We might have to make a second row there.
Good job. Some people go in front.
All right, I want to keep waiting. Here we go, here we go. What a good-looking group of wrestlers. Can we just applaud this fantastic group that's right here? All right. Now, I would like the wrestlers, when you hear your name, because we would like to acknowledge some of our medalists, if you'd just raise your hand so those in the audience and those in TV land will know who you are. Six of the wrestlers came home with a state medalist. The Lady Wildcats had four medalists. Peyton Agnel, Olivia Hogan, and Isabel Petty all finished fourth in their respective weight classes. Yeah, that's right. And Lakin Potter finished, placed sixth. Let's give those four a round of applause. Now, for the guys team, again, if you'll raise your hand so folks can see you. Jersey Hendricks had a fourth-place finish for the THS boys team, while Cody Agnel placed fifth. What an incredible way to represent on a state level. I'm so very proud of these teams. These teams aren't successful, by the way, without great coaching. Students, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Can I get an amen? All right. Before the state championships, Lady Wildcats head coach Jenna Morris was named the Region Two Wrestling Coach of the Year. Congratulations to Jenna Morris. Yeah. And is Jenna Morris here? Is she here this evening?
Hello, ma'am.
Come on, Coach. Does someone have a certificate? All right, we got to present a certificate. So, is Coach Morris making her way? Because obviously, I can't see. Very good. When she gets up to the center stage with our wrestlers, Dr. Hill will be presenting a certificate, and I know our communications specialist is going to take some great pictures. So, wrestlers, I do want you looking at Mr. Birdsong. Make eye contact. If you can see him, he can see you, and let's give him a great smile. Congratulations to our wrestlers and Coach Morris. All right, and once those pictures are done, you all may exit stage, right?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Or left. Way to go, guys. Congratulations. Good things happening. All right, and let us continue with the celebration. We want to recognize and celebrate our boys' basketball coach, Coach Welch. If you would, please come forward. Let's see, do I see Coach Welch? All right, let me read on. In February, the Tullahoma High School Boys Basketball Coach, Jason Welch, celebrated a huge coaching milestone with 300 career wins. Jason came to Tullahoma in 2019 to teach social studies and coach the boys' basketball teams. Tonight, we are excited to celebrate him on his contributions as head coach and this amazing milestone. So, while he is not here, we want to say, "Well done." So, congratulations, Coach Welch. And we have another Tullahoma High School educator to recognize, and this is related to Tennessee Pathways Certification. Last year, we were excited to share that Tullahoma High School earned Tennessee Pathways Certification in welding. With the immense amount of confidence and respect I have for our CTE department and leadership, I had no doubt that we would be adding another. And sure enough, I was not wrong. We are adding another. I am excited to share that the hard work of THS CAD teacher, Randy Edwards, and the hard work of CTE Director, Jesse Kinsey, we have now earned another Tennessee Pathway Certification, and this is in architectural and engineering design. Help me in welcoming Mr. Edwards to the stage. Come on down, Randy, because I see you out there. We want to celebrate this outstanding achievement. We are really proud of you. We are proud of our program. As you all know, with our strategic plan, school-to-work pathways is very important to us in our work, one of our priorities, and certainly, these courses and these pathways really help us stand out in this work. Mr. Edwards, congratulations to you.
Great job. Thank you. And although you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if there is anything else that you need to move on to, this would be a good time to move on. But come back anytime. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Do we have any individuals to address the board on an agenda item? Seeing there's no one, we'll move on. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Motion by Pat Welsh. Is there a second?
Second, Amy.
Second by Amy Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman, that's all in favor.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. 2022-23 budget, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. Well, I hope this is the last time that I'll say this, and that is, we're still waiting on a BEP estimate, but we do anticipate having one mid-April, and so that will help us out as we plan towards the fiscal year '23. Been working with principals and department heads, supervisors on needs for the upcoming year, and so that'll obviously be included when we're able to have detailed discussions with finance and with you all as we look forward to fiscal year '23. Thank you.
Okay.
Still no hint of what ultimate number might be, or I know we're going to have a resolution tonight.
He is asking if there's any hint on what the amount might be.
No hint whatsoever.
Thank you. Buildings and Grounds Report, Teresa Lawson.
Okay, the Building and Grounds Committee met on March the 7th, 2022, to discuss the following projects.
Turn your microphone toward yourself.
Okay, is that better? Okay. The committee was updated on the train investment grade audit for the district and upcoming kickoff meeting. The Tennis Court Project is scheduled to be bid prior to the April Board Meeting with a goal of being an action item on the April Agenda. Due to a dual enrollment partnership between THS and TCAT Shelbyville and required standards, bids are currently being received on an updated weld fume extraction system and replacement welding booths. So, we're excited about that. We discussed replacing a roll-up door leading into the band instrument storage room at THS. OLG continues to work on specifications for the potential bathroom renovations at Bel Air. The Bel Air HVAC prep work began on March 7th to prepare for new roof curbs and units to be replaced, beginning the first Monday after the spring semester ends. The committee discussed replacing the ceiling tile and updating the lighting at Bel Air. We were updated that invitations to bid were open for the replacement awning project at Bel Air. An update was presented to committee members regarding paving, the parking lot on the north side of Central. side of Central Office. The bid process is anticipated to be completed in time for this to appear on the April Board Agenda. Two sample paint swatches have been painted at Central Office. A determination will be made soon, and this project will begin. Have we chosen?
We have chosen the dark-colored swatches, so we are excited to get that exterior painted soon.
Yay, that will look so good.
Yes.
The condition of the maintenance building roof was discussed, and the best way to move forward with that. And the committee had a follow-up discussion on the possibility of removing the basketball goals at the Old West or CSS Building Gym. This item was tabled, by the way. Let's see, what else we have? We have a lot.
It was a big meeting.
It was. Page two. The committee was informed of the possibility that the exterior sign at Old West CSS would be replaced, and also a sign at the Telahoma Virtual Academy entrance on South Franklin Street be added. We discussed the need for a central storage space for the nutrition department, as Angela has been made aware of changes in delivery patterns from suppliers. And the East Middle School gym floor is scheduled to be sanded and recoded this summer. And that's all I have. Pat, Andy, do you, either do you have anything to add?
That was a good summary.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? That is a lot. Thank you all. Were you all out of there before lunch?
Barely. Right.
THS Welding Ventilation System, Mr. Ray.
Thank you again, as Ms. Lawson mentioned. At the high school, we are partnering with Tennessee College of Applied Technology, or as we all know, it's TCAT of Shelbyville, for dual enrollment, beginning in the fall semester of 2022. Upgrades are needed to the welding fume ventilation system in the welding shop to meet both TCAT and state standards. Invitations to bid for this project were distributed, and we had one response. Lincoln Electric's quote was in the amount of $145,845. The desire of THS administration is for this, along with the welding booth system that we'll discuss as well tonight, would be installed and ready to begin use in the fall semester. I'd recommend accepting this bid from Lincoln Electric at the quoted price of $145,845. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ray? Do I have a motion to accept the bid from Lincoln Electric at $145,845?
Sid Hill, so moved.
Motion by Sid Hill, a second?
Second, Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman of all papers.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the THS Welding Booths, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Kind of as a piggyback off of the previous item, again, with the partnering of TCAT for the fall semester dual enrollment, a secondary bid was put out as well for replacement welding booths in the welding shop. Again, invitations to bid were distributed with one response from Lincoln Electric. Their quote was in the amount of $48,664. THS CTE Director Jesse Kinsey will include this portion of the project in her Perkins Grant application for the funding model. Again, this is the desire to have this installed and ready for the fall semester as well. I'd like to recommend the acceptance of this bid from Lincoln Electric at the bid price of $48,644. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the bid?
So moved. Welsh.
Motion by Pat Welch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson, any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that I think you said there's 644, so I wanted the record to state that it's 644.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman of all papers.
Very good, thank you so much. Band Practice Field Tower, Jason Ray.
Thank you. The band practice field has a, currently has a pressure-treated wood director's tower that has served its purpose for close or maybe in excess of 20 years. The structure has been worked on and repaired as needed by the band boosters and the band directors themselves. The current structured stairway is accessible at all times, whether it's in use or not in use, which could be a liability. The band and band boosters would like to replace the current structure with a metal tower. The new tower would be a long-term upgrade to the current tower that's in place. Specifications include two steel-supported observation decks, so you could have directors on two different levels watching the band, giving direction, a metal roof, it would be a welded frame, and an enclosed stairway that would allow for a locked gate when not in use. Bids were accepted, and Melhart Music, located in McAllen, Texas, provided the bid in the amount of $45,770. If approved, this will be a joint project between TCS and the THS Band Boosters. The Band Boosters would contribute $20,000 to this project, with the balance of $25,770 to be district-funded. I recommend approving the replacement band tower at a total installed cost of $45,770, with the district's responsibility being $25,770. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ray?
One quick one. Describe that enclosed stairwell.
So where the opening for the stairs is, there's a metal swinging gate, if you will, that has the ability to be padlocked, so that it's not accessible.
To get in.
To get in.
But is the stairwell itself got some kind of...
Yes, yes, yes.
It's not solid, but it's substantial?
Rail'd, yes.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the replacement band tower at a total install cost of $45,770, with the district portion being $25,770?
So moved.
Motion by Amy Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman of all papers.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ray. And also, as with all of our booster groups, we just appreciate the partnership that we have with them and their willingness. $20,000 is a lot of money. We really, really appreciate that. Helps us get the work done. Thank you so much. Public Chapter 479, Dr. Shannon Duncan.
And as she makes her way, I just want to acknowledge this new public chapter that she's going to talk about came into a passage, if you will, in May of 2021. We began hearing about it at the TSBA Law Conference in July, and have heard about it throughout the year. And we're now at a place where, because its effect is this upcoming school year, that we need to modify our open enrollment process, all districts do, to align with the current law. So Dr. Duncan is going to take us through a presentation, and I believe a few of us will get out of the way, so we can see the screen. Okay, yes, thank you. As, as Dr. Stevens already told you all, this is a bit of a legislative update, as well as informing you all on some information that will impact some proposed policy change and some procedural updates for how this carries out in our day-to-day operations for Telahoma City Schools. So Public Chapter 479 has to do with open enrollment, which we have historically referred to here in TCS as out-of-zone transfer requests. So we have our four elementary zones and our east and west middle zones, and each year, families have had the ability to, we've had an open enrollment window, which per previous policy was the month of June in Telahoma, and families could make application to request that their student be allowed to attend another school for which they are not currently zoned. The public chapter now, it does establish that districts must hold this 30-day open enrollment period, which we were already doing. It now specifies that at least 14 days prior to this period opening, we must publicly advertise the number of available open seats by school and grade. It does allow for us to reserve, and this is what it says in the law, a reasonable number of spaces for siblings of students who are already at the school, anticipated growth, and children of faculty who are in district and work in that school, they are allowed to bring their children with them to that school. So what we'll be doing, well, I'll get to the timeline for you in a moment. At the, so 14 days prior to this open enrollment period, we post that information on our district website, and then we hold our open enrollment period. At the end of that 30 days, if more out-of-zone requests are made for a particular school and grade, then there are available seats. We must hold a lottery to determine which applicants receive those open spots. Therefore, no out-of-zone requests will be able to be accepted after that 30-day window because of that lottery requirement. We have to know who all is making requests and take that into account when we approve those requests or have to hold the lottery. Other implications and information that you all will need and want to know, we will be creating a waiting list for those who were not able to be granted those requests initially, if space were to become later, as enrollment might change prior to the school year starting. This does also impact our timeline for our out-of-district application process for our tuition families, because we have to, according to the new law, we have to hold this open enrollment prior to accepting any out-of-district new, and let me reiterate that, new out-of-district students. And that takes me to the next note. This does not impact any of our current families who are attending Telahoma City Schools on either a tuition-out-of-district basis or currently have permission for out-of-zone attendance at any of our schools here in TCS. This strictly applies to any new application in either of those instances. It does also support our current policy and practice. It does reiterate in this new law that students who are given open enrollment status and acceptance must maintain acceptable attendance, grades, and behavior at those schools, or that zone exemption can be revoked. And I'll give Zach credit for this pretty graphic and his patience, as I was slightly indecisive on different dates and wording, but he put together this nice graphic of a timeline on how we will implement these open enrollment periods and different processes. So I did not realize that the font in the red was going to be difficult to see, so I'll make sure, I'll read what's going on in each of these date timeframes for you. April 4th through the 14th, we're going to open our kindergarten enrollment for in-district families. We're going to, we want to do a big push and try to get as many of our kindergarteners registered, pickup packets, and get registered at their school of zone in that window, so we have as good an idea as possible on what those numbers are looking like. Of course, kindergarten registration will continue throughout the spring, but that's going to be our first big window and push for those numbers. On April 18th, that is when we will post, that 14-day window, when we will post the number of available seats on our district website for families who are wishing to apply for out-of-zone transfer requests. Then, on May 2nd, we will open up the open enrollment window, where families will go to our district website under the Enrollment tab, and there's a Google forum titled "Out-of-zone Transfer Request," and that's where they will make their request for those open enrollment exemptions. And we cannot, they'll get a nice auto-generated reply, but we will not be able to let anyone know about their acceptance or exemption status until the end of that window, should we have to conduct any lottery for those seats. On May 23rd, we will go ahead and open the, that's supposed to be, we need to say "out-of-district." We will go ahead and open out-of-district applications for families wanting to come to TCS on a tuition basis. One of the, or the reason that we're going to go ahead and open those applications on May 23rd, even though I will not be responding or processing to any of those until June 1st, until our open enrollment closes, but school ends on May 20th, and our, several of our sports teams are hosting tryouts. And so we need an indication that those families or students are intending to apply and attend Telahoma City Schools in order to be eligible for those various tryouts and workouts and whatever athletic activities are going on that week. So we will open the application. I will begin processing those applications June 1st through 15th. Since this is much later than usual, and most schools will be out, and I will not be able to get some of that typical attendance, grade, behavior information that I normally gather for those acceptances, families will be asked to provide that as part of their application process, as part of our new procedure. And then we'll close that down for the summer, and then, per previous practice, we open the registration window for in-district students and any new out-of-district applications from July 18th to 29th, the two weeks before school starts on August 1st. And this is what I had just discussed, that's new information regarding what will be required of families if they are making an out-of-district application. Again, given the late, it being pushed back because of moving open enrollment up. We will definitely have all of this information under the Enrollment tab, once it is approved, or if, if and when it is approved, as far as a policy update. And we also have communication, Zach and I have worked with Dr. Stevens on very specific communication to go out to families and in media, so that we are doing everything we can to make families aware of these changes and updates. And that is all I have on that, unless anyone has a question for me.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said that it allows for, was it reasonable?
A reasonable number.
Okay, so how is that determined?
We are going to conduct some surveys to assess number of teachers' children and siblings, and we are going to do whatever is reasonable in our power to try to collect those numbers and make those decisions. And I want to underscore a couple of things. April 4th to 14th is really an important push for us. So for those of you that are out in the community and you're talking with parents and families, our new kindergarten students, we really want to encourage that enrollment in that two-week period. As you know, staffing certainly is implicated, you know, there's an implication there based upon our number of students. Now, that doesn't mean it closes after those two weeks, but we're really trying to do a strong push to get our new kindergarten students enrolled within that two-week window. So I want to underscore that. The second thing that I want to lift up is there is a news release that will come out that will go to all employees, that will go to all parents, it will go to social media and media. It's very important that we share the information now, early, and it will happen sometime this week. Our hope is tomorrow, but we know it'll be this week that those communications will go out. Last thing to underscore, this does not impact people currently enrolled that are in an out-of-district or out-of-zone situation. And sometimes, when people hear new laws, new processes, there is a little bit of confusion. So let's all stay grounded in, this is really...
So let's all stay grounded in this is really impacting new enrollment.
Got it.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, and especially when we have areas that are growing.
Yes, yes.
Lots of building. Anyone have anything else for Dr. Duncan or?
I'm sorry. Is Coach Olive aware of this?
Yes, and that's one of the reasons that May 23rd opening that we're, while-
He's trying out of practice.
That's right. So what we're expecting those families to demonstrate is, it is, it is going to appear that they are intending to, right, but the actual date doesn't open until June 1st. So we were trying to work with our athletic director and what we know about sports, practice, and so forth, to sort of meet that halfway.
No, I just wanted to let you know that I did call Coach Olive. We had a couple of questions from parents as we get this time of year, asking about tryouts and things like that, so I immediately realized there was a bit of a discrepancy, and so I called Coach Olive, and we worked through that and talked with Dr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Lots of information. Thank you so much. Policy updates, Amy Johnson.
All righty. Based on the information provided from Dr. Duncan, the policy committee recommends adopting an updated version of Policy 6.206, which is transfers within the system to align with recent legislative changes. We've studied this, and we also recommend adopting the model policy, 6.205, student assignments, to align with recent legislative changes. I pretty much said that, but the recommended motion is to accept Policy 6.205 and 6.206 as presented on a first and final reading.
Okay. So are you making the motion?
I guess I'll make the motion.
Motion by Amy Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Very good. New business, trustees for non-certified retirement, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, a non-certificated retirement program requires the appointment of trustees for the plan. Each year, three trustees are to be named by resolution of the board. The administration proposes the trustees be the board chair, the superintendent, and the director of business. As the reorganization of the board takes place at the September meeting, the trustees proposed would be the newly-elected board chair, superintendent, and director of business. We recommend accepting the board chair, superintendent, and director of business as trustees for the non-certified retirement plan.
Very good. Do I have a motion to accept the trustees for the non-certified retirement plan?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson, a second?
Second.
Second by Sid Hill, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor.
Thank you. Funding model resolution, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, as you all know, Governor Lee instituted a review of the current school funding model. Formally, we've been utilizing the BEP, which is still in play for the upcoming year, and there has been a lot of movement and a lot of stakeholder input and feedback that's been gathered over the last several months. Eighteen subcommittees engaged in weekly discussions. Dr. Stevens, one of our teachers here at the high school, served on one of those subcommittees, and I served on a different subcommittee. So we were engaged in some of those conversations that took place. There has been a, multiple meetings held across the state. Teresa Lawson and I attended a meeting with Jason Ray and our mayor and city administrators, so there's been a lot happening related to this funding model. Currently, and I will say that I really do remain hopeful that the proposed school funding formula, which is being called the Tennessee Investment in Student Achievement, TISA or TESA, I've heard it both ways, so I'll say it both ways. You know, I remain hopeful that this will improve the amount of funds the state provides to ensure that our students' needs are met, and we can provide, continue to provide, an excellent education, meeting the needs of the whole child, pre-K through 12. With that said, and knowing that this is in the midst of the legislative session, we believe it is important to consider a resolution related to this work that we would, if it is agreed upon and approved, we would send on to TSBA to toss to our legislator and our senator, that our voice would be heard in the thoughts that we have related to this new funding model. And I suppose it best that this resolution be read, although lengthy, so everyone understands what's included here. Resolution of the Telohaoma City Schools Board of Education, resolution on implementation of a new statewide education funding formula. Whereas, the City Schools Board of Education is charged with governing the school districts so that all students receive the best educational opportunities and to graduate prepared to enter a post-secondary institution or the workforce. Whereas, the Constitution of the State of Tennessee requires that the Tennessee General Assembly provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standards of a system of free public schools. Whereas, the basic education program, BEP funding formula, is the method used in determining how Tennessee education funding is generated and distributed among Tennessee schools. Whereas, Governor Lee has announced his intention to present a new funding formula to the General Assembly for their approval. Whereas, any new funding formula should consider the different needs of each school system, and it would be in the best interest of all students to look at actual school district budgets and not rely solely on questionnaires or surveys that do not accurately reflect the complexities of school funding. Whereas, any new funding formula should ensure that public funds remain with the public school system. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Telohaoma City Schools Board of Education urges the governor and general assembly to include the following in a new funding formula. Include a provision that holds districts harmless on funding and assures no district receives less funding than what they received under the BEP. Applies fiscal capacity to the base amount only and waits for individual student subgroup needs that are applied to state-level funding. Maintains maintenance-of-effort requirements to prevent local funding bodies from replacing local funds with state funds. Maintain the cost differential factor for districts impacted by higher cost. Maintains a growth component that addresses new student enrollment in districts and does not fund solely on prior year. Contains a strong commitment to mental health professionals, counselors, social workers, nurses, et cetera, due to the fact schools are providing more social services than ever before. Makes a bold move to increase teacher salaries for both entry-level and veteran educators, supporting both teacher recruitment and retention. Any outcome-based components address the following. Do not penalize districts for implementing programs that lead to college and career readiness but reduce student populations such as early graduation. Do not base solely based on achievement measures and/or testing. Incorporate a growth factor. Do not allow a negative impact on students and districts. Include a focus on K-2 students and provide additional resources prior to third grade. Increase funding associated with pre-K and is based on the actual cost of pre-K programs. Ensure funding is not based on specific districts and/or issues with those districts. Include multiple resources that explain the funding formula and how calculations are developed. And if the board approves this resolution and adopts it this evening, it will be signed, and we will be able to send it forward tomorrow.
Very good. I think it's an excellent resolution. Do I have a motion to accept the funding model resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Amy Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt, thank you. Any discussion?
Somewhere I was reading today, and it may have been something from the media, I'm not sure which, but I believe the difference that they're going to spend is a billion.
That's correct.
And I would hope that that helps. The language is appropriate we've got in here now, to make sure we keep the same.
Yeah.
But if there's a billion dollars loose out there, I would hope that we have more. And your office and the chairs, both have been, have done a great job in communicating with us and telling us it's necessary and important to be talking to our general assembly representatives. And I would ask that you both continue to do so, because this is, you know, we've got another resolution following this one about charter schools. It'd be awful to let the bulk of that billion go to creation of charter schools.
Yeah. It is important that our voice as educators, as board members, be heard and be shared with the legislative body. We are in the midst of this work. We have reasonable questions, and as noted, I do feel very hopeful that this new funding model, which moves from resource-based to student-based, could produce some positives. But there are certainly some questions, and I believe we have relayed important elements that we believe should be absolutely a part of any funding model.
I think y'all have done a great job communicating. The state has used your expertise, and I'm extremely proud of that. But Mr. Ray still can't tell us what the number is. And you know, it's time that somebody finds that out, so we can plan.
And what's important for the community to know, so this new model, if, right, big if, it goes through the legislative session, does not apply next year, it is the following year. And certainly, what we have seen in terms of this model, I believe as it moves through the legislative session, is going to have iterations, alterations, amendments. And I have heard there have been several already added to this particular legislation. Because this is an active, in-the-moment event, I just think it's very important that we share our voice and make sure it gets to the right organizations and individuals.
There's a whole lot good in it. You know, I don't want to-
Yes.
-act too sarcastic about it. The emphasis on K through 3rd with the real emphasis on reading in the 3rd grade is great.
Yes.
But what do we get?
I think that there was a push, definitely today, I saw it, you all may have read too, to move this to summer, to a summer session. Does anybody know what happened with it today?
I do not know what happened, but I know because I will be at the Legislative Learning Conference for the next two days. I'll be finding out, and I'll be texting.
Very good. Anything else? Do I have a motion to accept the funding model? We did that, right? We had discussion? Yes, let me just repeat the motion, to accept the funding model resolution as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Charter schools resolution, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, so on this one, I'm going to share an update, but first, I'm just going to speak generally. There's, has been much discussion about charter schools in the past, and I want to talk specifically about this resolution, which focuses on a timeline for review and approval of charter school applications, the ability for a charter school to choose to use a school building and funding changes related to facility use. The resolution, by the way, does not in any way represent the board's position on charter schools generally, but simply focuses on two pieces of legislation that include various changes and additions to charter school laws. I'm going to read the resolution to you as it stands, and then I'm going to provide you a bit of an update and explain how we will address that update. So the resolution states, whereas House Bill 2833 and Senate Bill 2168 have been filed for introduction in the current Tennessee legislative session and include various changes and additions to laws concerning charter schools, and whereas said changes include reducing the timeline for review and approval of charter school applications from 90 to 75 days, adding a provision for charter schools to choose to use a school building that is at or below 50% of the district usage, and funding challenges related to facilities use, and other provisions, reducing local district decision-making, and whereas the current review time for charter school applications already demands prompt attention in order to complete an appropriate review. School buildings are not designed for common areas such as office, gymnasiums, libraries, hallways, et cetera, to have two separate schools with two administrations applying different rules and schedules, and the proposed legislation does not anticipate growth in an LEA's enrollment demand, and any funding change proposals are not timely, given the anticipated proposals for replacement of the BEP funding formula. And whereas, this resolution does not in any way represent the board's position on charter schools generally, and whereas the proposed legislation reduces local decision-making on issues that are best made by local elected bodies with knowledge of local conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Telohaoma City Schools Board of Education urges the General Assembly and any committees or subcommittees considering HB, House Bill 2833, and Senate Bill 2168, to take no action advancing said proposed legislation. So now the update. So this afternoon, that House bill was taken off notice, and that was shared with me. I was watching that as we were preparing for this meeting, and so I reached out to one of our contacts at TSBA. And what is interested, interesting to note is the language from that bill has now been moved to a new House bill, 591, which is being considered. So what we plan to do, if you all approve this particular resolution, when we communicate tomorrow about this resolution, this is really stating the Board of Education's view on not altering timelines, not enabling schools to be utilized, et cetera. We're going to note that we recognize that has been taken off, but much of the language has been moved to 591, and so we want it to be recognized, our view as it relates to this topic, if that makes sense. So I do want you to know, this is in real time, and so there's been a bit of a change. Our position is still the same on these topics.
Or we want to put both numbers on it then?
I think as long as we have it in that electronic communication, I think we're really okay, because it's really the points within the document related to the charter school language.
And if you have not had time to really look at this, you really need to take time to look at it. It is, it's something. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the resolution on charter schools as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Welsh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by-
Sid and Amy.
A second by Amy Johnson.
I was louder.
Is there any, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
All in favor.
Very good, and thank you so much, and we look forward to you delivering those.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, settlement of litigation, Davis versus Telohaoma City Schools, Mr. Miller.
Chairman, the executive committee recommends to the board that the Telohaoma City Schools contribute $75,000 toward the settlement of Davis versus the Telohaoma City Schools.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion to contribute the $75,000 to the settlement of Davis versus Telohaoma City Schools?
Sid Hill, so moved.
Motion by Sid Hill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman, it's all in favor.
Very good, thank you. Settlement of litigation, Harwell versus Telohaoma City Schools, Mr. Miller.
Chairman, the executive committee recommends to the board that the Telohaoma City Schools contributes $55,000 toward the settlement of Harwell versus the Telohaoma City School system.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to contribute $55,000 to the settlement of Harwell versus Telohaoma City Schools?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson, is there a second?
So moved.
Second by Pat Welsh, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Chairman, it's all in favor.
Very good, thank you so much. District report, superintendent's report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, well, it is exciting to be back, and we are in the last quarter, and I'm here to tell you it's going to move fast. I already feel like in two days, we've been here for a week. It's just been action-packed. This evening has been so much fun, celebrating so many students and adults, the Coleman's, it was just-
It was just amazing to meet them and just to share with them my pride and their legacy and what a difference they've made in our community. As you know, because I saw many of you before spring break, we had the annual TCS Arts Night, and it was my first one because our first year, my first year, unfortunately, due to COVID, we were unable to have it, and it was done electronically, and it was pure magic. For those of you that were here, the artwork on display was unreal, the music, the dance, the instruments, wow. So that was just really so much fun. I continue to be amazed by our students and by our faculty and staff who do incredible work to promote such creative experiences for our young people, which, by the way, will carry them on through life. You know, many of you know I like to do poetry and dabble in music, and that's all very creative. It stays with you forever, whatever that piece is for you, and I thank my teachers for inspiring me in that way. So it is time that we begin thinking about school calendars, and I'm not talking about next year. I'm actually talking about 2023, '24, and 2024, '25. Are we planning ahead or what? Yes, we are. So I started this work yesterday by meeting with a very large committee. We were in the lecture hall. The committee consists of members from every school, roughly eight to 10 members at every school, that are coming to take on this important work of gathering feedback from those they represent and presenting their top three ideas of what is really vital to consider when creating a school calendar. So this work is beginning. It was really fun to spend time with them yesterday because, you know, I like law, and I got to go over law because there's actual law that relates to school calendar. I was able to demonstrate how it connects to policy and share with them our Policy 1.8 on school calendar work. And I will tell you that the great majority of people learned something new yesterday about school calendar. Those statements were said readily to me during and even following that meeting, and even today, when I ran into a couple of teachers, the comments were, "I had no idea. I did not know." So that part of it was really fun. We also talked about some non-negotiables, some expectations. So they have a deadline to get to me the top three ideas from their group. Those ideas will be categorized into, for example, maybe the topic is professional learning. And so anything related to professional learning is going to drop in, and we're going to have that. There will be a district-wide calendar committee that gathers, and that will be a cross-section of people in the district, including some parents, who will join us in this work. And we're going to look at all the feedback, and we're going to see what does the large voice say related to school calendar creation and what's really important. By the way, let me make clear to you the prong or the lens in which we're using. We're thinking about what is best for students and families, what is best for teaching and learning. That's really what school calendar creation is about, best for students and families, best for teaching and learning. So that's what we're going to be looking at as we work on this calendar. So April 25th, this district committee gets together and they look at this information and they work on some drafts. By the way, we will have created some drafts for them because it's really hard work to build a calendar following the rules. So they will see that those drafts align to the large voice, but they're going to have the opportunity to alter them and move them about. Once we're done as a district level, this group that I met with yesterday all comes back, May 10th. And they know if they can't come, they have to have a substitute because I'm going to find out from them exactly what they like or dislike, how they might alter it. And I explain to them, because I've done this work for many years prior, there's always changes. They see things and they have a keen eye and understanding, and so we'll make some alterations. Following that, the intent is for us to put out drafts to all employees and allow them to vote. My hope is, it's simple. You know, do you like A or B? Like punch a button, and you can give some feedback as well, but really trying to make the feedback very clear. And my desire is in June during our summer retreat to really lay out for you and let you see all the feedback, what was the large voice, what was discussed, and have you be an active part in looking at that school calendar work as well. Ideally, I'd love to say in August, we will have calendars presented for the '23, '24, and '24, '25 school years. That will certainly help our stakeholders as people really do plan for their future when they think about vacations and other things in their future. So that's the goings-on there. We have a lot happening as this quarter unfolds, so I do want to lift up some things really quickly because this quarter is going to fly. First of all, on April 15th, I want to remind everyone that students, teachers, and staff will enjoy a day off on that Friday. I want to remind everybody about graduation. We will be having the THS and TVA graduation on Friday, May 13th, at 7:30 at the high school. So we will have both graduating classes together for that event, which will be very exciting. The last day of school for students will be Friday, May 20th, with a 1 o'clock dismissal for all. And as we think about board meetings, our next two are here for sure, April and May, as we will be celebrating lots of folks in April. We'll be celebrating our Teachers of the Year in May, and that's, by the way, is April 19th. And in May, we will be celebrating our retirees, and that is May 17th here at the high school. I think that'll do.
That's great. Thank you so much. I have a short report. A big thank you to Sandy Vaughn, our Board Secretary, for all that she does all the time. So we're going to give you all a round of applause.
Yay.
You take care of all of us, and we appreciate you so very much. And also to Dr. English, Atticus Hensley, and Justin Scott for the words that you shared with us that were so personal and touching about the Coleman's. I really, really appreciate that, although a lot of us know the Coleman's, we don't know them like you know them, and it was really special to hear that, and I know it was very special for them. On your, and the April-May meetings are here. Anytime we have a larger crowd, we need to come here. Dr. Stevens shared that. On your desk is the Dr. Stevens evaluation document, and this is going to be a quick turnaround. We want to try to get these to Sandy on Friday, by the end of the day Friday. So yes, if something comes up and it doesn't work out, that's, just let us know, and if you have any questions, let me know. And thank you all. Thank you all. City Board Liaison Report, Rupa Blackwell.
I'm going to move fast since I know we're at 6:30 almost, and I want to make sure we're cognizant of your time. Big things, last board meeting, we have hired a new TA/EDC director, Winston Brooks, so I wanted to share that with you, really excited to have that. So also wanted to let you know the Arts Council is working toward an economic impact study of what the arts do within our community. I think that information will be super helpful for you guys as well as for the visual arts program and all of that. The parks survey itself, I know we sent out a Parks Master Plan survey that's been going out to the community, about 700 people responded. My understanding is that that's being utilized and evaluated now to determine what the master plan will be for our park system. I know that you all are probably working on the same thing that we are regarding budgeting, funding, et cetera, as we are on a deadline to figure that out. One of the things our board has been working on is to move forward with a capital project plan, as well as determining from that information what can be funded through the ARPA funding. So that's something we've been working on. We had a study session this past Monday, not last Monday, but the one before, and I'm hoping that we will soon be able to vote on that via a resolution soon. Final thing is, which I think is the most pertinent for y'all, that more than anything is the facility use agreement with the swim team. I anticipate that's coming up in front of the board on Monday. My understanding is we're trying to put facility use agreements in general with our leagues and teams, which I think will be really beneficial in the end so we all know who's responsible for what. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lots of good things. Personnel, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, the personnel changes for March have been presented to you all in an attachment.
Thank you. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. You have the fiscal year '22 financials through the end of February in your packet, detailed there. Just want to lift up that we are tracking well at this point in the fiscal year. As of this report, two-thirds of the way through. One thing to lift up is sales tax has exceeded our last year's revenue by about 9% to the same point in the year, and expenditures are in great shape as we head towards the last quarter of the fiscal year. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ray. It's nice to end on a good note. Is there anything else to come before this board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Sid Hill.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.